Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, October 8, 2019. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We are very pleased today to have Sarah McCollum, a grade 12 student from Western Canada High School, to sing "Oh, Canada." I would ask that everyone please stand and follow Sarah's lead.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True page with love in all of us command. Car ton bras s'est porté l'épée. Il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillantes exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Sarah, on behalf of the Calgary Board of Education, I would like to thank you for taking time to come to us and share with us that wonderful rendition of our national anthem. Thank you very much.
We would like to acknowledge the traditional territories and oral practices of the Blatford Nations, which includes the Sisika, the Bakani, the Gayna. We also acknowledge the Tsutena and Stony Nakota First Nations, the Métis Nation Region III, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty VII region of southern Alberta. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting today, representing our stakeholder groups. We have Bob Cocking from the ATA Local 38, Stephen Klukas and Rick Petrovich from the Principals Association for Adolescent Learners. Welcome. And Gary Tink and Michelle Howell from the Senior High School Principals Association. Thank you for joining us today. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Miner, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, the following change has been requested to today's agenda, that item number seven, public comment, be moved to item number four, and the remaining of the agenda items be renumbered accordingly.
Thank you. Can I have a motion that the agenda be approved with these proposed changes? Trustee Adams, those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Today, we have one request for public comment. I would ask our speaker to focus on matters before the board today and refrain from speaking on the personal character or performance of any individual's department or school in accordance with our board meeting procedures. Ms. Pedan, please come forward to the podium, state your name and any organization you represent, and you will have three minutes to address the board today.
Thank you. Chair Dennis, trustees, Chief Superintendent Usie, all members of CBE Administration and Staff, and fellow guests, I thank you for allowing me this opportunity today. My name is Sarah Pedan, and today I represent only myself as a member of the public. I'm a registered psychologist with expertise in learning, the measurement of learning, and particularly the science of reading and reading instruction. I also run an online group called Dyslexia Support Calgary, but I can't say I'm representing that group today because there's been no time to put my comments in front of them for any feedback. I believe it's probably fair to predict that the targets discussed today will also become precedent or templates to be used when setting targets in the future. I predict that future target setting will consider the thinking that went into setting these targets. So I think that today's conversation is very important. There are two main things I'd like to hear discussed on the public record. One is the idea that provincial achievement test targets will be based on the cohort of test writers rather than based on all students. The other is with respect to the targets for grade six English Language Arts provincial achievement tests. I'm concerned about the difference between the targets for the cohort of all writers compared with the cohort of writers who are self-identified Indigenous students. The foundation of my questions about looking at results for all students versus writers needs to be set. We know that some students won't write, so we'll never have 100% of students having demonstrated acceptable or better achievement on PATs. So I can see why it might be tempting to set targets based on those who write. When you look at changes over time, however, if you consider all students, you will be making the same comparison every year in the sense that you're looking at the entire population. In contrast, when you analyze results of writers, you're looking at a subset of the population, and that subset will necessarily change every year. Since the group of who writes will change every year, the meaning of the results changes in unknowable ways. To me, and I believe many others, it's the achievement of all children that matters most, not the achievement of students who write tests. So here are my questions I hope you will discuss. When you set targets based on writers rather than the entire population, how does that align with the inclusive approach that considers all students and not merely some or most? How does it fit with the idea of success for each student, every day, no exception? And does it set teachers up to be caught between competing demands? There will be system pressures to improve overall achievement, but won't there also be pressure to especially improve achievement for those who write tests? What happens when, for example, in reading, teachers don't always know how to teach every student to meet the standards, and they know that the system is only looking at the results for PATs for those who write? So I wonder if trustees have considered or will consider asking administration to include a statement that PAT targets always assume maintaining or increasing participation rate. In other words, will the board clarify that the target won't be considered met if the participation rate is even the smallest bit lower than it was in the previous year? And for grade six English Language Arts, I do wonder what message is being sent when we say that we aim to be rated as having improved with respect to the results for all test writers, but we aim to be rated as having maintained the status of test writers who are self-identified Indigenous students? As long as those students make the least change necessary in a positive direction, that we can be confident the increase isn't just chance? Because that's what you're really asking when you look for statistically significant change, just the least little bit that you know isn't by chance. So I thank you for your time, and I hope these questions will inform your consideration and debate.
As there is no awards or recognition scheduled today, our next business deals with results focus. Today on our agenda is results to academic success targets. Chief Superintendent Usie, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, today's report, Results to Academic Success Targets, is the result of the board's request that the chief superintendent review the targets for this policy. Proposed targets have been included and are based on the new indicators approved on June 25th of this year. Trustees and administration worked collaboratively to finalize the proposed targets for academic success in Calgary Board of Education. Administration has appreciated the efforts and the focus and honesty that drove this conversations with our board. At this time, staff would be happy to answer your questions related to this report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So trustees, any questions regarding the report? Trustee Hurdman?
Thank you. With regards to report card results and creating a baseline based on the 2018-19 report card results, why was this year chosen?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman. The 2018-2019 results were chosen specifically to start a baseline because of the sense of urgency we feel to actually be able to analyze trend data. Recognizing that as a system, significant work has been done over the last number of years in relation to calibration of student work. However, we also recognize that additional work this summer has occurred to further support that. Starting with the reality of what our baseline is of 2018-19, identifying that in connection to the 2019-2020 data, will also provide an opportunity to determine if further adjustments need to be made to that baseline relating to those differences.
So just to follow up, you're saying that the baseline could change.
When we take a look at our 2018-2019 differences connected to 2019-2020, given this is our first year, I would expect critical analysis of that would be required, given the nature of your question. So I would want to indicate that we need to identify and look at that when we have that comparison.
Trustee Davis?
So two weeks ago, I think we shared some information at the Council of School Council meeting about the work you referenced this summer, and perhaps if you could just take a moment to talk about what was done, what the outcomes will be of that, and when that assessment changes will be visible to parents.
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Davis. This past summer, we had over 100 teachers and principals working together with specialists along with Superintendent Yee and myself, related to developing assessment guides for K-9 for math and ELA. Those particular assessment guides are partially completed and were in fact released internally to teachers this past week, and are in relation to outcomes that span the year and focus on utilizing mastery being on the four-point scale, describe the learning progression that a student would enter into a grade level as demonstrating, and where we would wish to see them at the end in demonstrating full proficiency connected to those curricular outcomes. Within that work and applying it to the use of report card achievement indicators for the end of year, those particular assessment guides in relation to math and English Language Arts will provide guidelines and baseline for teachers to measure student performance. They do not describe specific tasks. They are related solely to the synthesized outcomes. In terms of parent accessibility of those currently, because they are not fully completed in that we have more outcomes that we are developing this work for, further communication in relation to the use of those guides will be available following January of 2020.
Trustee Hurdman?
Thank you. We know that test scores can sometimes go up and down, but we're just looking at single year targets. I'm wondering if there was any consideration given to longer-term targets.
So you're correct in that while two years of data give a comparison, three or more years of data allow for the possibility to identify trends. Once the data allows for the identification of a trend, our targets will need to be set for three and five years. So currently, with the new targets and our state, similar to the previous or first question, we need to look at the three and five-year targets. And given that these are new sets, that is why, because we needed to have a baseline from which to begin, that will be the next step for us following this work.
Trustee Hurdleka?
So... Hmm. Okay. This is going to make for an interesting meeting. Just down here, put my leg up in the air and my antenna or something. So we look to page three of eight, and to the point that was brought up by our speaker. Yeah, there we go. Good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, page three. Ms. Pedan had brought up a point that I guess I'll ask a question to in regards to English Language Arts VI. The acceptable standard improvement measure is improved, and if we look to further down on that page, for students who are self-identified as Indigenous, we have English Language Arts VI is maintained, and that there's evidence of chi-square value increase within the range. So can you just explain why we have a difference between those two groups of students?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdleka. In relation to the difference between the writers for English Language Arts VI with the measure being improved, that is our current next step in relation to writers. When we break it down into the Indigenous cohort, specifically the chi-square increase would indicate a significant level of improvement within the current, or sorry, would indicate a significant level of improved achievement. And when we're measuring the improvement measure, that is an additional component there. So our improvement measure is maintained, but our achievement would need to increase based on the chi-square value, which, as Alberta Education defines, is 3.84 statistical points above. And so utilizing that, we would still be seeing improvement within that target. That would be a requirement. Additionally, though, we would need to also then address the three- and five-year trend, which would expect to see, or three- and five-year target, to trustee Hurdman's earlier question, something else that we would need to identify specific to the Indigenous cohort.
Is that because of the small population? Does that play a role?
In relation to any of our individual cohort data, we're really looking at a smaller amount of population, and so to identify that as a trend looking within the value of the chi-square would be necessary as a valid measure of improvement within the maintained target would be an absolute expectation.
Trustee Hurdman?
Since we're throwing away on chi-square all the time, would you mind just commenting on exactly what the chi-square tells us and what meaningful improvement would be using the chi-square?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman. I apologize for my earlier miss there. Thank you for that question. The chi-square test is a statistical test that determines whether observed values are significantly different, and in our case and in the context of our targets, we're looking at improved than expected values. And so Alberta Education has standardized the chi-square value that indicates a significant difference is identified as being 3.84. Any test that results in this number or higher would indicate meaningful improvement. So when we talk about improvement within a target that says maintained, there is actually significant statistical improvement within that particular category as reflected in the target, and very specific reporting would be clear around whether or not true improvement had existed for that cohort.
Trustee Hurdman?
Just one last question. I noticed that some targets were using the improvement measure, some other ones were using the achievement measure, some the overall measure, and others were just a simple percentage of students. So can you just walk me through how you determined how to set those targets?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman. So our achievement measures indicate actual results. So in the context of our report card data, those are actual results that are stated there. When we're looking at our improvement measures, we indicate a change in results, and those improvement measures are based on our standardized assessments through provincial achievement tests and diploma exams. Those overall, those particular ones reflect improvement, and that's why it is in alignment with Alberta Education language. The overall measures indicate a combination of both current achievement as well as analysis of improvement. And so based on the actual measure itself, report card data versus PAT or diploma exam data, that's why you see a difference in description related to those. And the determination of which measure that we would set the targets to was based on the data being used. So report card data being achievement, PAT, diploma exams being improvement, and the overall measure being a combination of both as applicable to our multi-year data.
Trustee Adams?
Just following up with that, when you say a combination of both, our report cards from kindergarten to grade nine are one to four grading system, whereas the PATs, I believe, come to us in a percentage. So how do you marry the two then?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Adams. We actually aren't marrying the two in the targets because the targets set for report cards are specifically only to report card data. The PAT and diploma exams are a separate target, so we're not marrying the overall measure of improvement connected to blurring those two. We are maintaining them separate and setting separate targets. There may be opportunity to analyze how it is those are aligning once we have that baseline.
Trustee Rocha?
More of a comment than a question, I guess. I think this report came to us because last spring, we asked for some work to be done on the targets. You guys went away and did a ton of work, and we've got the new targets we were asking for. I think it's tough to look at these. I found it tough to look at these because they lack some context, which was not intentional, but it is what it is. I think these will make a lot more sense once they're connected to the R2 monitoring that they belong to. And we're going to, in time, I think we'll see a lot more refinement of the targets as we've got more data and we're able to kind of narrow down what we're looking for in targets. So I appreciate all the work that went into this, and yeah, this will only get better. Overall, we're going to have a lot more data to analyze, which is, I think, what everyone wanted, so.
All right, any further questions? All right. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee Hurdman?
That the Board of Trustees approves the results to academic success targets as presented in this report, and that the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to review the targets for results to academic success for board reaffirmation or approval by June 30th, 2020.
Trustees, are we all right to consider these motions together, or would you prefer separately? Together? I'm seeing nods for together. Great. All right, so trustees, do you have any questions about the motions? All right, so the motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the results to academic success targets as presented in this report, and that the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to review the targets for results to academic success for board reaffirmation or approval by June 30, 2020. Trustee Hurdman, would you like to open debate?
I think trustee Bradshaw already did, but I'll continue. So approval of targets is something that is necessary inside our governance model so that there is a common understanding amongst the board, amongst the administration, and amongst our public as to what constitutes reasonable progress when it comes to academic achievement, when we're talking about results to. As a board, we focused on outcomes. We don't focus on the strategies or the tools which are used in order to achieve those outcomes. That is the domain of our chief superintendent. So when we're talking about the targets, we're really focusing on what outcomes we want to achieve, in this case, over the next year. As has been pointed out, this is a work in progress. The second part of the motion that we're debating right now is very important, that we continue to want to have these conversations. We continue to want to refine these targets so that we can continue these conversations around how we should be objectively looking, especially at trends over time. And I think that this provides another example of how this board is becoming more data-focused and looking for quality indicators of progress, and so I think this is a good step forward in the right direction.
Any other trustees for first round? Trustee Adams?
I just want to really say thank you to all of the hard work that Hurdman has done on this. I know it's been a long, long process, and you guys have put a lot of work into it, and we really very much appreciate it. I'm very much, like Mike, I'm actually very much a visual person. I learn by doing, so I'm very much looking forward to even a sample one of how it's all going to kind of fit together, so just to help me work my way through it. But again, I'm very, very appreciative for everything that you guys have done, and I look forward to the ongoing process and see where this gets us.
Trustee Hurdleka?
So what I think is important about this report, certainly for the system but for the board itself, is that our work is policy, and that's how we direct the system to do the work that they need to do, and to have strong policies with targets that we can look at year by year and seeing how we're progressing and moving forward or what the challenges are. You know, this is our work. We would like to get into all sorts of things within the system, I think many of us at times, and I think many of us have. And I mean, that is the importance of our governance structure and the importance of the policies that we have in place. So this just makes us stronger. This work by our administration but also of trustees is critically important for us to do our job, and so I'm very pleased to see this and to echo other trustees. When we get that report in front of us, I think to be able to actually look at the information that's there, I think will help me get a better understanding, but I think we've got just a great start here. So, thank you.
Any other trustees for first round? Trustee Davis?
So I think the work that was done this spring with these targets, with the indicators, is some of the most important work the board will have done during its term, and certainly from a public assurance point of view, that it's critical that we are looking at data that is valuable and representative. I appreciate the movement within the system to be open about acknowledging our gaps and understanding where they are and what we need to do to fix them. And I think that it is this process actually that engenders a lot of public trust in the work that we're doing. So I think this report and its foundation and the indicators will be critical for the next two years but also beyond.
All right, second round. Any trustees for second round of debate? Trustee here?
I think it goes without question that as a public school system, we have to rely on public trust. we have to rely on public trust. And that public trust is based on the type of information and accountability which we provide. And I think this is an excellent step forward. And this will be an ongoing thing. This will always be with us and it will always be a challenge. And we'll always try to get better. And that's just what we do. I'm gonna use a little segue, if I can. October 5th was World Teachers Day, okay? And I saw Mr. Cocking and a few people putting out various tweets and things. And this was, this was just excellent. But one of those axioms, or whatever you want to call it, that I saw out on the social media actually impacts what we're looking at today. And it said, "Teachers don't teach for the income. They teach for the outcome." And that's what we have here today. We're dealing with outcomes. I think it's a major step forward. I congratulate those people who did this work. Thank you very much.
Any other trustees for second round?
I'll jump in then. All right. Also too, I'd just like to say thank you also for the work that was done on this. And just for the, the incredible level of dialogue that US staff had with us as trustees in answering our plethora of questions as we were working through this process and determining what, what this report will look like moving forward. Results matter. And certainly, as governors of the system, we care about that most, right? And how do, how do we know that our students are making progress? And so I do believe that this report, as it comes forward to us, will certainly help us to be sure in how our students are progressing. So I'm looking forward to seeing the, seeing the report in action. And just thank you again for your efforts in this regard. Any other trustees for second round? Trustee Bradshaw?
Feel like I couldn't have a first round after some of the comments. Think myself is cutting edge, but maybe too cutting edge. So I guess this, you know, we've hired a new Chief Superintendent and we've heard over and over again about closing gaps and raising the achievement bar. And this is how, this is how we're gonna do it. We don't know. I guess we can't do that without knowing where we are. And so this is just, I think, great work. I think what everyone around the table wants. So it's great to see this being put into place. And yeah, I think we're only gonna hopefully see things going up from here.
Any other trustees for second round? Trustee Hurdman, would you like to close? Nope, all right. And I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a board development session on student mental health and wellbeing. Chief Usee, would you please introduce the presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, in the Calgary Board of Education, we are committed to creating the conditions in which each and every student can succeed. To support student success, it is essential that we develop the collective capacity of CBE leaders to improve student achievement, equity, and wellbeing. Today, we will hear from members of two teams who have been working to create these conditions throughout our system with specific attention to student mental health and wellbeing. The two groups, teams you will hear from are the Sexual Orientation and Gender Identity Team and the Trauma Informed Practice Team. They are present in the room and certainly, thank you for being here today. I'm sure the trustees are looking forward to your presentation. At this time, I'd like to invite Superintendent Darren Yee to introduce the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Usee. Chair Dennis and trustees, in today's session on student wellbeing and mental health at the universal level, we're going to explore work being done in the system to promote welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning environments so that each student can reach success. Every day, no exceptions. Over the past number of years, the three-year ed plan has had a clear vision on the importance of personalized learning. This inclusive practice supports all of our students to be known and it continues to define our work moving forward. At this point, I'd like to welcome Cindy McNiven, Director of Inclusive Education, to introduce members from our Sexual Orientation, Gender Identity, and our Trauma Informed Practice Team, our SOJI team and our TIP team, if you're looking for an acronym.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to welcome Rhonda Williams, System Assistant Principal for Welcome, Caring, Respectful, and Safe Learning Environments; Stephen Becker, Specialist in School Improvement, Trauma Informed Practice; Anne Daniel, Specialist in School Improvement, Complimentary Curriculum Wellness; Trish Deneau, Specialist in School Improvement, Core Curriculum; and Sonya Fein, Psychologist in School Improvement, Sectional Orientation and Gender Identity.
Thanks, Trish. When students feel like they belong, it encourages them to stay in school, to learn, and succeed. Some of the articulated factors within the welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning environments include: healthy and respectful relationships are built and fostered; students feel that adults care for them as individuals and as a group; positive mental health is promoted; values, rights, and responsibilities are respected; diversity is respected, celebrated, and understood as a strength; children, youth, and adults model positive social-emotional skills, including empathy and compassion. Within the Calgary Board of Education, the Response to Intervention, or RTI, framework is used to provide evidence-based support at different levels. The underlying goal of the RTI model is to support academic, social, and emotional needs of students so that each student is successful according to their own ability. It is built on the premise that when universal supports are provided consistently for each student, the majority of students will thrive. As this visual shows, each student benefit from universal system of school-wide supports in the personalized learning environment. Those students who need more targeted support are accommodated within the context of their learning environment. Every day, we work together to create welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe school communities where each and every student feels a sense of belonging and experiences success in learning. On Tuesday, March 13, 2018, the Calgary Board of Education Board of Trustees unanimously approved an amendment to Results I. Mission: Amending the CBE's mission statement to include language which respects gender identity and gender expression. The new mission statement is as follows: Each student, in keeping with their individual abilities and gifts, will complete high school with a foundation of learning necessary to thrive in life, work, and continued learning. You, as trustees, have made it clear that creating the conditions for each student to thrive is critical for fulfilling our purpose. You, as trustees, have intentionally named each student in order to emphasize the wide range of diversity within our student population. It is important to note that the Board of Trustees has defined diversity as the full range of uniqueness within humanity. Inclusive actions and accommodations for sexual and gender diverse students are guided and supported by legislation and public policy that defend human rights at every level within the RTI framework. The Alberta Education Act, the ATA Professional Code of Conduct, the Declaration of Rights and Responsibility for Teachers, the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, the Criminal Code of Canada, and the Alberta Human Rights Act all serve as important policies and legislation that reflect the need for Alberta School Board employees to act in ways that are inclusive and respectful of students, their families, and the school personnel with diverse sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions. These laws and public policies are critical in guiding our work and ensuring that we attend to the rights of each of our students, families, and staff members.
In the spring of 2015, a system-based Sexual Orientation and Gender Identity Team was created in order to respond to the needs and services, or to the needs and supports that our school district was requesting. The team is multidisciplinary in nature and it includes members from the school improvement specialists, psychologists, a diversity and learning support advisor from the Indigenous team, a legal counsel, a human resource advisor, and the Director of Inclusive Education. Everyone has a sexual orientation and gender identity. Gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation are influenced by multiple personal, cultural, political, social, and economic factors. Terms and conditions related to these concepts are constantly changing and evolving over time. As you can see in this image, gender identity is a personal, deeply felt sense of being male, female, neither, both, or something else. Gender identity can be fluid over time and it can change over time as well. Sexual orientation refers to a person's romantic, sexual, physical, and/or spiritual attraction to a specific gender or genders. Some of the terms people use to identify their sexuality are lesbian, gay, bisexual, asexual, pansexual, heterosexual, and we could go on. Sexual orientation and gender identity are two separate distinct features of one's identity. So for example, somebody can identify as transgender but also identify as gay, straight, heterosexual, et cetera. Gender expression is how a person expresses their gender identity through name and pronoun use, clothing, voice, mannerisms, et cetera. Sex assigned at birth refers to a sex a person is assigned at birth based on hormones, chromosomes, and physical anatomy. Historically, we have viewed these concepts in a binary way. The non-binary gender model shown on this slide is an inclusive and current model for conceptualizing gender identity sex assigned at birth, gender expression, and sexual orientation, as it has evolved and continues to do so over time. Our students are asking that we use this expansive model to conceptualize these diverse identities. Although we often refer to the four concepts named on this slide as to be within a spectrum, if we look at the relationship between them and the interplay between all of these, it's more of a constellation. This model also highlights that each person has a gender identity, sex assigned at birth, gender expression, and sexual orientation that is unique to each individual. When the SOJI team was created, the work was focused on the top two tiers of the RTI model, which was to support gender diverse students, families, and employees. At the specialized level, these services include individual counseling, assessment, and consultation with school staff, parents, and community professionals. At the targeted level, this includes consultation with administrators about accommodations based on gender identity and supporting identified gender diverse students. Since that time, the work has evolved to support universal conditions for success. This shift in practice was in response to both student voice as well as the requests that we have received as the SOJI team to provide whole-school support such as professional learning opportunities around creating universal conditions for success. These are some of the, these are some of the identified areas of universal supports that are beneficial for all and essential for some students and employees and help create welcoming and safe spaces for everyone. These universal supports include: inclusive washrooms and change rooms, visibly-supported student-led gay-straight alliances, minimizing gender segregated activities, creating physical spaces that reflect diversity in all forms of humanity, modeling and coaching the social space that fosters inclusion for each student, and the use of inclusive curriculum and resources. As you can see on this slide, the work of the SOJI team continues to be distributed in all three tiers of the RTI framework.
In alignment with our SOJI team, our Trauma Informed Practice, or TIP, team, as part of the work of our Risk and Resiliency Team within Inclusive Education, has done a great deal to support the mental health of students in the CBE to promote wellbeing for all. Everyone has mental health. It is dynamic and it changes over time. Supporting the mental health of students is an important part of the CBE's commitment to success for each and every student. Approximately one in five students is also impacted by mental illness and requires support from mental health professionals. In the Calgary Board of Education, we work to provide welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning environments to promote and support positive mental health for all. We also identify students who might be experiencing symptoms of mental illness and refer them to mental health professionals within the CBE and externally to community organizations for support. Through a collective vision for supporting all students, collaborative conversations, and a shared understanding of one another's mandates, schools and partners work together to support student mental health needs. Schools create welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning environments, provide instructional opportunities to develop social-emotional competencies, provide targeted small-group learning related to self-regulation, executive function, friendship skills, et cetera, support individual students needing short-term social and behavioral interventions, and work with CBE mental health teams and partners to inform and support this work. Partners provide specialized services, programming, and treatment to students and their families in various settings, work with schools to inform and support our work, including professional learning for school staff, and provide targeted small-group supports to students through school-based mental health staff. In the Calgary Board of Education, Trauma Informed Practice is led by members of the Risk and Resilience Team within Inclusive Education under the umbrella of School Improvement. Team members include Mental Health and Wellness, Trauma Informed Practice, Progressive Student Discipline, Mental Health Literacy, Attendance, Risk, and the District Threat Assessment Team, and the Women's Shelters. Trauma Informed Practice is also a through-line for all members of the Risk and Resiliency Team. We have also collaborated with system teams throughout the board to strengthen and align our work. Within the RTI framework, universally in the Calgary Board of Education, we are working to develop common language and a shared understanding of mental health. In terms of universal supports, mental health literacy sessions are being offered both to individual staff members and to whole-school communities on an ongoing basis. Trauma Informed Practice work over the last two years in high schools has helped to provide a developmental lens for understanding student learning and behavior. For targeted support, schools have access to in-house support such as guidance counselors or learning coaches, individualized program plans, and their school learning team. They also have access to their area learning team and system supports like psychologists. Specialized supports are also available, including our unique settings and our specialized program placements. An understanding of Adverse Childhood Experiences, or ACEs, grounds Trauma Informed Practice work in the Calgary Board of Education. The initial Adverse Childhood Experiences study was done between 1995 and 1997 by Dr. Vince Paletti at Kaiser Permanente, a major health insurance provider in the United States, and Dr. Bob Anda at the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. and Dr. Bob Anda at the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Together, they asked 17,500 adults about their history of exposure to what they called adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs. Participants were simply asked if they had experienced each of these forms of childhood adversity. For every yes, they would get a point on their ACE score. Then they correlated these ACE scores against health outcomes. In the original ACE study, they found a correlation between high ACE scores and poor health outcomes. Subsequent studies have found that a high ACE score can proportionately impact educational outcomes. Students coping with impacts of trauma are more likely to fail a grade, score lower on standardized achievement test scores, have receptive or expressive language difficulties, be suspended or expelled more often, and be designated to special education more frequently. While trauma can have profound impacts on development, it is also important to remember that not all of our students are impacted by trauma. While 26% of participants in the original study had one ACE and 12.5% had four or more, 36% of participants in the original study had zero ACEs. There are also people with high ACE scores who do remarkably well in school and in life. ACE scores don't tally the positive experiences in early life that can help build resilience and protect a child from the effects of trauma. For example, having a grandparent who loves you, a teacher who understands and believes in you, or a trusted friend you can confide in can mitigate these long-term effects of early trauma. Trauma Informed Practice, informed with this growing body of evidence, is an example of a universal approach to wellbeing and mental health within the Calgary Board of Education. The Harvard Center on the Developing Child is a global leader working to achieve breakthrough outcomes for children around the world in partnership with organizations committed to using the science to inform policy and practice and to drive innovation. They have identified five interrelated key concepts essential to understanding childhood brain development which provide a foundation for Trauma Informed Practice. These include brain architecture, toxic stress, resilience, serve and return, and executive function and self-regulation. Informed with an understanding of the key concepts of brain development, we are able to make the following connections between trauma and learning. Achieving the Calgary Board of Education's mission of high school completion and the results of the academic success, citizenship, personal development, and character for students who have experienced trauma rests on the ability of educators to inform their practice by understanding the following. Brain development is impacted by toxic stress. Trauma often disconnects students from the relationship and resources that could help to mitigate its effects, and these combined factors can have significant impacts on a student's readiness to learn. Trauma Informed Practice works from this understanding to inform an approach that shifts the way we view student behavior, from judgment or wondering what's wrong with a child to curiosity and compassion, wondering what has happened to a child and how it might be impacting their learning and their behavior. An important aspect of this work is also remembering that we aren't asking educators to engage in therapeutic interventions to treat students' trauma. We are asking them to draw on a skill set that aligns with much of what we already know to be good teaching practice to create conditions where all students are better able to thrive. Everyone can engage in Trauma Informed Practice, an approach that is beneficial for all and essential for those impacted by trauma. Trauma-specific interventions are the work of trained mental health practitioners. In the spring of 2016, CBE high school principals requested support with increasingly complex mental health needs of students. In an effort to address the needs of a large subset of students with mental health struggles, building upon prior Trauma Informed Practice work within the Calgary Board of Education, the Trauma Informed Practice for High School Success Learning Collaborative was developed. Principals had choice and participation and voice in their level of commitment. Over the last two years, we have had 62 principals, assistant principals, learning leaders, teachers, and support staff leading change in 25 schools, representing approximately 2,150 employees to support approximately 29,000 students. This represents a diverse range of school populations. During Year One of the Trauma Informed Practice for High School Success Learning Collaborative, a developmental evaluation was used to track progress and capture lessons learned. Participants reported the following impacts on their practice: increased employee knowledge regarding impacts of trauma on learning and behavior; Trauma Informed Practice has become the lens through which they view the world inside and outside the classroom; and enhanced staff and student relationships. Participants also reported the following whole-school impacts: changes to physical spaces, virtual spaces, and online learning environments; innovative approaches to delivery of supports and services; shifts in school policy and shared practice and staff; increased staff empathy and understanding of student behaviors and potential triggers resulting in more effective responses; improved staff and student perceptions of safe, caring, and predictable school environments. Our Sexual Orientation and Gender Identity Team and Trauma Informed Practice Team had demonstrated their approaches to building student resiliency within the Calgary Board of Education. Building resiliency in students occurs when we increase protective factors and reduce risk factors. Protective factors are conditions or attributes in individuals that mitigate or eliminate risk, thereby increasing the health and wellbeing of students. Protective factors help students to build resources, supports, or coping strategies that allow them to be available to learn even under stress. In schools, we are committed to creating universal conditions for learning by increasing protective factors through fostering welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning environments. We are happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for that presentation. This might give me the painful excuse of going back and watching our board meetings on YouTube after. There's a lot of information there, but I might go back and do that. Trustees have any questions? Trustee Hurdman.
Just on the last slide that was just shown, when you were talking about protective factors and how those factors contribute to a safe, welcoming, caring environment, can you give some examples of what sort of protective factors would be in a school or are expected to be in our schools?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman. I'll let Stephen speak to that one.
Chair Dennis, to trustee Hurdman. Protective factors would include, as a foundation, positive supportive caring relationships with adults in the building, creating conditions also for those same positive supportive and caring relationships with students in the building, opportunity for students to develop their understanding of their own internal experience of self-regulation, the role of self-regulation in learning, to develop their capacity for that self-regulation in the learning environment as well, as well as student clubs like GSAs and QSA's that we just heard about from our SOJI team, and other resources that schools and teachers might choose to draw upon to further support this work in schools.
Trustee Davis.
So in the presentation, you talked a little bit about how even students who have ACEs in their history don't necessarily exhibit the same behaviors as others. So how are we understanding resilience in terms of what makes one student more resilient in the same kind of events versus another student?
Chair Dennis, to trustee Davis. That is a very individualized perspective related to our work around personalized learning. And so in terms of resilience, we use certain frameworks that our folks talked about related to resiliency for students. I think in terms of one student versus another, knowing, so our principals who know their students and their families well, our teachers who know their students and their families well, and then working with our area and our system services to support students to develop those skills.
Trustee Adams.
Just want to ask a question around the adverse childhood experiences, the ACE, in their abuse, neglect, household dysfunction are the three that are missing. I'm curious how illness in the family and death of a parent or a sibling, does that qualify under the ACE program and under the trauma?
Chair Dennis, to trustee Adams. Illness and death was not included in the original study around adverse childhood experiences that was published in 1998. Other types of trauma are also impactful, we know this. This isn't a model, and the ACE study is only a guide to identify adverse childhood events and the potential impact on health, chronic diseases, social and emotional problems. We knew that you would have heard likely of ACEs scores in our work and wanted to clarify that for you. We do understand that illness in a family and certainly death in a family affects students and our mental health supports that are in individual schools, and our area and central services support those students and their families. We also have partners in the community who do a great job of working around grief and other counseling supports for students and families.
Trustee Hurdleka.
On page 6-3, we talk about belonging when we're looking at kind of a definition of the work that we do around welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning environments. And I'm wondering, what's our definition, the CBE, of belonging? And is it the same as fitting in?
Chair Dennis, to trustee Hurdleka, that's a very good question. We do not have a CBE definition of belonging. As you heard in our presentation, we have defined diversity as the uniqueness of all forms of humanity and have created that definition. Belonging would be part of one of the social-emotional programming options that a number of schools use. So for instance, the Circle of Courage uses belonging as one of its four pieces: belonging, mastery, independence, and generosity. So it is a term that is out in the language around mental health and wellbeing. We have not defined it.
I have trustee Hurdleka, then trustee Hare, then trustee Adams.
I just wanted to follow up with the question. And the reason why I asked it is because when I think of being a student who walks into a school, and say a junior high kid, and we have language around belonging, and we know that young people, just like old people, want to be a part of something. And I think sometimes when we talk about issues around fitting in, that can drive kids to be a part of something, but that's not necessarily always something that they need. And I believe what we're trying to do at the board, from what I understand, going to schools and seeing what our staff are doing, is creating that opportunity for kids to feel like they are part of something, but something positive, something that is giving them the opportunity to be the best them. So I was just really looking for that clarification because fitting in is one thing, but belonging, I believe, is something different, and I think many of our kids are moving in the direction of trying to fit in, and that's creating negative impacts. And I don't mean to go in a soapbox or anything about that. I really was just wanting to get some clarification, but your answer was fine.
Trustee Hare.
Just to following up on trustee Hurdleka's question, is belonging the same as inclusion?
Chair Dennis, to trustee Hare, that's another very good question. Over the last number of years in Alberta education, we have changed the language from special education to inclusive education, inclusive practice. And considering larger numbers of students in the being part of a school, being part of a school system versus being coded as a special education code has certainly moved our work forward, and we are continuing that work. When we're looking at a particular portfolio such as Director McNivins, it is of inclusive education. And so I think that our move to be inclusive, we're moving forward. We certainly still have more work to do to have all of our students feel and their families included in our system.
Trustee Adams.
I'm just curious. I understand that many of our elementary schools still use the zones of regulation as part of a mental health tool. So my question is, is how do our schools use that tool? And my follow-up will be, how do we deal with children that have been through trauma? As one of the things we know with trauma is you don't necessarily feel like everybody else, and you don't know why you don't feel like everybody else, and trying to put into a box how you feel can be very detrimental for these children.
Chair Dennis, to trustee Adams. In terms of looking at students and the various programs that schools select in order to help their students develop a sense of wellbeing and social-emotional learning, so if we go back to our program of studies, health in our elementary schools and also calm in high schools have outcomes connected to mental health and social-emotional learning. So that's one of the pieces that we do as a universal work for all of our students. Some schools, I would say a number of schools, also look to other resources. Some of them come in the form of connections in with our central supports, and some of them are particular programs. So for instance, I referenced the Circle of Courage, which is used in a number of our schools. Some of our schools have used a program called PATHS, which is promoting alternative thinking strategies. You talked about zones of regulation. Our partners with Calgary Police Service have helped us with things like S4, the Start, Smart, Stay Safe. Schools also have programs around the three pillars of respect, so respect for self, respect for others, respect for this place. So there are a variety of programs that principals and their staffs choose based on their own context to supplement the work that is part of our health and our calm programs.
And are parents informed about those programs and how they work? Or how does the communication work with parents? I guess is literally what I'm asking.
Chair Dennis, to trustee Adams. Generally, parents are very involved with that, and it was interesting to go back to one of the questions earlier around, I think it was trustee Hurdleka and middle school students, and informing their parents or lack of informing their parents, part of a developmental task. So wanting to be involved with things that maybe, so elementary students and wanting to be involved with things like peace education and those sorts of things. The communication around those additional programs is through our variety of communication mechanisms, letters that go home, the messages that go home, communication through our school councils, because quite often our school councils are supporting those resources as well. When you get into our middle schools, the students generally do not take home as much information, and you may have to pry the information out of them in terms of doing that. I think when people get to high school and they find their passions around these areas, then they're certainly more willing to talk to their parents about possibilities. Again, school websites and the kind of communication that goes home, what is available on our website related to our central website is important as well.
Trustee Hurdleka.
Pardon me? Okay, here we go. Questions? Questions? So many. Okay. So I really appreciated the presentation and the information on the SOJI team and listing off all of the legislation that is required in order to support our students, gender identity and gender expression LGBTQ students. So I guess I'm wondering, do all of our staff, I mean, this is legislated human rights law, do all of our staff have professional development and training to understand? do all of our staff have professional development and training to understand the importance of all of the, you know, the accommodations and all of that work that you do? Is everyone trained in this to understand these students?
So Chair Dennis to trustee Hurdleka, I would say we have certain procedures where principals each year require our staff to have information around some of these pieces. In terms of training for all of our staff around sexual orientation and gender identity, no, not at this particular point. And I think what I would like to do is ask Sonia if she'll provide an expanded version.
So I'm not sure about protocol at this point, if, since I'm adding to if I, what the protocol is. Okay, okay. So in terms of some of the supports that we provided, in terms of professional development for schools, we've been into 54 schools, campuses, in terms of providing some support with legislation as well as universal supports. And at the same time, we provide what we call a Gender 101 that talks about gender diversity and how to support individual students. So that's in school settings. And in terms of non-base school teams, we've presented to five of what we would call our old, like, service units, if that helps, same sort of presentation.
So from my perspective as an area director, we invited, because of questions that were coming particularly from our middle and our high school, principals and our assistant principals and teachers, we provided the opportunity to have principals spend a morning with Sonia and Anne around, and they give us a basic presentation, and then there were lots of questions that came because people were thinking of individual students. In addition to that, our elementary principals were looking for the same kind of resource. We provided the PowerPoint presentation and then the connection in. This particular team is very welcoming to any school or any individual who wants support. There is an overall or overriding perspective, but each one of the students and their families, the cultural connections and cultural perspectives are complicated. And so working with families, individuals, individual schools is very important.
Trustee Davis?
Just going back to the high school collaborative work, is every high school participating in that program?
So Chair Dennis to trustee Davis, I think I'll ask Stephen if he'll provide more details. He talked about individually, when we started, schools could be an A, a B, a C school with different levels of involvement.
As choice and voice is an important element of trauma-informed practice, schools were offered as, sorry, superintendent-y said, a level of choice in their involvement. So an A school would send four participants to each learning session and would receive more direct support in their school. We had five A schools our first year. B-level school would send two participants and have some support. And then a C-level school had the option of sending their principal if they were interested in learning more. So in the first year, we had five A schools. We had 12 B schools, and we had one C school. Our second year, we had four more high schools sign on, so that brought us up to 22 high schools. And then this year, we have had two more high schools sign on as well. So we've expanded over time. We do not have involvement from every high school, but every high school that has been interested in participation has been offered a place.
And also to follow up with Stephen, I know personally from working as an area director that some of the folks who were involved with the high school programs, who had moved on to assistant principal positions in our middle schools, are continuing that work and are working with the high schools as well. I would say one of the areas that our principals have identified is that we also need to continue those supports into our middle schools and our elementary schools, and that's something that we'll be working with. Certainly, the well-being for learning goal that is K, is a K to 12 expectation is part of that work.
Trustee Davis, and then trustee Hurdman.
So I talked a little bit about the outcomes, and I just, you know, and you talked about the RTI framework, wrote down that, I think the comments were around addressing academic and social-emotional needs. And so when we look at some of the ways that we might consider evaluating the impacts, you know, I think of greater student attendance, less dropout, less absenteeism, less sickness from staff, better academic performance, reduced pressure on guidance department, things like that. So I'm wondering if, you know, at the end of the two years, as we come to the end of the two years, are we, are we also looking at some of those things and to evaluate the impact that those programs are having?
Chair Dennis to trustee Davis. Individual schools would be, part of their school development planning would be including a number of those particular pieces of evidence in their work, as you mentioned, tracking attendance, looking at lateness, looking at suspensions, connections with outside partners as well in terms of student well-being for learning. Stephen, I'll ask Stephen if he would have any other perspectives that he could share.
So last year, in collaboration with specialists in curriculum as well as the research and strategy department, we worked to develop a list of data sources that schools may use to measure impact of well-being and trauma-informed practice work in schools. So schools may be measuring impact using demographic data, including class sizes, absent rates, course completion, student codes, and suspension rates. School process data, their PLC notes, discipline policy, instructional strategies, task design and assessment. Perception data, for example, results from the CBE student survey, accountability pillar survey, and staff consultation, as well as achievement data, for example, student work, assessment results, PAT and diploma results, report card data, and high school completion rates.
Trustee Hurdman, and then trustee Hurdleka.
Thank you. Just following up on some comments that I made, just tell me if I'm getting this right. So the in-trauma-informed practice sessions that we're doing have been focused on high schools. So for the elementary and middle schools, is there something that we're doing system-wide for them, or is it really up to the principal to decide what works best for their communities?
Chair Davis to trustee Hurdman. We have, as I mentioned before, a variety of programs that are external programs or programs that are created and modified for our schools, but we don't have a standard approach across our elementary schools. Again, if we take a look at the school development plans that have been in existence over the last number of years, a number of those schools would have identified a well-being or a wellness for learning goal, but again, not consistently. We think that the movement that we have this fall to looking at a literacy, a program, a study, and a wellness for learning goal will help us be more consistent. Certainly, the supports from our school improvement folks, the specialists that you see here, our psychologists and the whole team, will be wanting to make sure that we're tracking the effectiveness of those goals. Principals know that these are not one-off, kind of, we'll have somebody do a presentation. It is a year-long approach to wellness as opposed to a one-night-for-parents.
Trustee Hurdleka?
So this is actually just a follow-up to trustee Hurdman's question because on page 6-17, we talk about trauma-informed practice as a universal approach with the CBE. Maybe could you, sorry, explain what that, what that means if, when we're talking about elementary and middle school, if it's a universal approach? Maybe if you could just clarify that for me.
Chair Dennis to trustee Hurdleka. In looking at the RTI model, and certainly in the language this afternoon, you would have heard that the supports at the universal level are for students across all of our system. As you move up the triangle, the complexity of learning for some students requires additional support. That middle tier, the targeted supports, might be working within a, with a strategist from an area learning team. When we get to the top of the triangle, the student may be part of one of our unique settings or one of our specialized programs. So what does it mean for universal supports across trauma-informed practice and our sexual orientation and gender identity? Our teams are working to provide what is good practice for all kids and essential for some in terms of their learning needs. I would say it is interesting in terms of looking at a provincial perspective and the approach with a response to intervention of the RTI triangle and, and how we may have expectations for our whole province around universal supports for student learning.
So just trying to think of how this translates on the ground in our high schools. So our teachers have gone through some of this information on what trauma-informed practice is, but they're in a class of 30 with a child who's having a moment. And so the question is, you know, what, beyond the understanding, which obviously is important, what resources do they have? And do they have any additional resources? Or what tools do they have to address it? I think it's the, so what now, now what, what's next? You know, what are we actually giving to our staff in order to help them? Go to what's next.
Chair Dennis to trustee Davis. Again, that's a very complex question, and there's no simple answer to that. And so looking at, so if we go back to the slide in terms of a student and behavior in classes, and so I can think back to my experience as a high school English teacher, our work around personalized learning has, has helped us understand students as individuals, holistic folks that are more nuanced than a score on a diploma. And that is certainly one of the perspectives that is very clear from trustees. Knowing the students and what are the, what are the triggers for stress, certain times in a year in a high school student's life will be more stressful than others in coming up to diplomas. I think about some of the things that certain schools do at those times, zen rooms prior to diplomas where they come and they can, you know, do yoga or de-stress in a variety of ways. So we have created opportunities for students based on the learning conditions that they require in order to be successful. We're beyond the typical, we have a counseling department, you're having a bad day, go and see the counselor, which used to be our past practice. So it's certainly a more nuanced, our student success centers in the schools, the kind of leadership and peer mentorship programs that our high schools are providing. And certainly, within high schools, the specialized class supports for students who have mental health issues. So again, it's what that particular student needs at this particular time in order to develop their learning and not to impact the learning of others in a negative way. I'll ask Stephen if he has other experiences because of his high school experience. Stephen says that covers it.
So we're, we're training many of our staff in trauma-informed practice, and I'm wondering, do all students benefit from staff trained in trauma-informed practice? And the reason I'm asking that is I think some people might have an idea that it's just those kids that are challenging, and so I'd like you to maybe share some information about that.
Certainly, Chair Dennis to trustee Hurdleka. If you think about the analogy to good teaching, good teaching is good teaching, certain supports are necessary in certain structures for some students to be successful, but the kind of structures that are in place in general help all students be successful. And so I think I'm going to ask Stephen at this point if you have other particulars related to the good for all but essential for some.
So Chair Dennis to trustee Hurdleka. All students face stressors that impact their ability to learn. A trauma-informed approach supports all students by providing those safe conditions for learning for all. We do so by recognizing and mitigating those potential triggers that a student might face in the classroom and responding to student needs in ways that are caring, curious, and compassionate. This allows students to understand their thinking brain or their higher-order thinking skills and engage more fully in learning, regardless of past history, regardless of impacts on brain development.
Knowing our students very well, providing the supports they need.
That's great. I guess I have a wider question for the system, and I'm wondering if we require any mandatory training for all teachers or all staff within the system, like an online course in safety or something is there? Is that required in our system at all?
Chair Dennis to trustee Hurdleka. I don't believe we have an online course that requires teachers to learn more about safety for students. There are a variety of ways that we deal with if a student is, has become unsafe, how we deal with that in terms of training. I'm not sure. Thank you.
I just meant in general. So is there any training required for all staff on anything under the sun? I shouldn't use safety because that's intertwined with what we're talking about, but it could be anything. And I'm, as I'm pondering the presentation, this is coming to mind. Are there any requirements?
So at present, trustee Hurdleka, our teachers come with a very diverse skillset depending on their pre-service training program. Some of those programs, and again, depending on the, what the student or the teacher who is a student decides to focus on, may have more of an emphasis on unique learning needs and how to deal with students who have those learning challenges. So we, we don't have a general perspective around inclusionary practices and how to deal with students who have complex needs. That would be something that would be very beneficial, I think, from our universities. What we do is provide a variety of professional learning experiences when teachers are requesting that. As I mentioned earlier, one of the things that I heard as an area director from my elementary and our middle school principals is to work in a very intensive way around mental health and supports for students. So again, going to one presentation and assuming the teachers will learn it is not enough. They need conversation. They need conversation over a longer period of time, a longer professional learning session related to those issues. Peer conversations are very helpful. What did you do in your classroom? How have you been able to deal with that? I know that our ATA folks are also working to support our teachers related to student wellbeing in those scales.
Trustee Davis and trustee Adams.
So in June, we heard that we have about 80 psychologists on staff. Can you give us a sense of roughly how many are involved in providing therapeutic services versus educational services?
Chair Dennis to trustee Davis. We have 22 FTE psychologists that are assigned to schools as mental health therapists. We have approximately five FTE psychologists who are deployed to our unique programs, the Children's Village Hall, Discovering Choices. And those 27 psychologists that I mentioned would be providing services to approximately 1,000 students.
Is it a follow-up or a different? Okay, trustee, trustee Adams.
Thank you. I'm just curious, how do we identify students that are going through trauma or have been through trauma? I know sometimes it's a very personal thing and I know often it comes out in behaviors versus anything else. I'm just curious, how do you identify these students that do require?
Chair Dennis to trustee Adams. Certainly teachers know their students very well. And in terms of working year to year with a student moving from one class to another class, we have opportunities for teachers to work with teachers and to provide perspectives around what appropriate learning is. Connecting in with our parents is very important. And so that often includes the teacher, the resource teacher, the principal or the assistant principal as well, in terms of connecting even further into the area learning team and the system principal in each one of our seven areas, leading that learning team to provide supports for students.
Trustee Davis.
So I think it's no secret that, you know, we discussed the budget and the things that we're doing and what we own and what we should own and what we need to do. You know, these are often not easy questions, but certainly, you know, looking at the provision of therapeutic mental health counseling strikes me as something, you know, in Alberta Health's wheelhouse of responsibility. And so I'm sure, something I wish to discuss with trustees at a future date, but I am curious. What have we communicated to Alberta Health about this? You know, have we gone to Alberta Health and said, look, we have, this is what we actually need to make the system work? How can we access 27 of your psychologists in our schools? Can you just give me some sense of the level of dialogue that's occurred?
Chair Dennis to trustee Davis. Certainly, we are educators. You know, we are the education system, not the health system, not the family services system, but those three systems intersect all of the time in our schools with our families. I think that certainly we work with the RCSD, the Service Collaborative, and the focus in this area is around mental health supports. I think that what I hear from my involvement with that leadership group this fall is that they're stretched in Alberta Health in terms of their service delivery as well. And so how can we work together so that we provide the services so that our families, students specifically in our school, continue to thrive? That's an ongoing conversation, how we provide services in the best way for our families. Cindy's just given me some information related to the number. And so Alberta Health has provided 13 mental health therapists through our RCSD work.
Specifically to CBE or through the?
Specifically to CBE.
Okay. Thanks.
Trustee Hirdlicka.
So as I look at 6-11, and I look at the SOGI requests for 2018 and 2019. A third of the requests were for psychological services. And so I'm wondering if you could break that down, what that would mean? I'm wondering if that's direct services for students or if that's requests from supports from a principal to ask for information from a psychologist? Like what kind of supports are we talking about?
Chair Dennis to trustee Hirdlicka. Sonya would be the great person to answer that. Being a psychologist herself.
Chair Dennis to trustee Hirdlicka, I'll get it right next time. Okay. So in terms of the psychological services that we would provide for students, we would be looking at counseling, assessment, formal consultation, which would mean that we could go in and help a student at school in terms of if there's any issues at school related to gender identity. We also support the accommodation process, like accommodations based on gender identity. So that would be having conversations with school administrators, parents, and the students themselves. So all of those would be involved in those services.
Trustee Davis.
So I think a few of the trustees have just touched on what else is happening outside of our high schools. And certainly, you know, we hear a lot about depression and anxiety and suicidal thoughts and we've not specifically addressed it in the presentation. I'm just wondering, are we looking at that through the lens of trauma-informed practice or is that, or is that something different?
Chair Dennis to trustee Davis. Certainly, the lens around trauma-informed practice can be used for looking at students who are high anxiety and who have suicidal ideation as well. In terms of additional supports that are required, certainly targeted and sometimes specialized supports, like our mental health classes for students with those very complex learning and anxiety needs.
I guess just a follow-up question. I mean, you know, I certainly observe a lot of the discussion in the public around anxiety. Is it, you know, is that, is that normal stress, right? As, I mean, students go through normal stress as part of their development versus extreme stress? And I would say probably like many other things, there's not really a common understanding of what, you know, somebody with an anxiety problem versus a child who's just going through normal stress, for example. And so I'm just wondering, is there any intentional work in the schools taking place to help students understand what, you know, normal developmental stress is versus something perhaps that's a little farther on the spectrum?
So Chair Dennis to trustee Davis. Each of our schools has to identify a person who is trained to identify suicidal ideation and how to deal with that. So it's called our assist training and we have a person in each one of our schools. In terms of additional supports, then connecting in with areas or our complex learning and our psychologists in our system teams would be part of that work as well. It's very interesting to think about our world these days and how the impact of the world is impacting students. And I believe that one of the, this is an aside and I'm going on a birdwalk here, related to environment and students and how that's been very much in the news. And I believe there's an environmental anxiety disorder that is now being considered to be part of the DSM Diagnostic Manual. So our world changes and it impacts kids and they have a very narrow view of what is possible because of limited life experiences. So certainly our teachers, our counselors are working to help them understand that there is a bigger picture. Sometimes when you're 15, it's, or 13, it's hard to see that.
Trustee Hirdlicka.
So I am curious of the knowledge and the work the CBE's doing around trauma-informed practice and also doing this in order to create safe and caring learning environments. When we're looking at our students' learning, we know that students with trauma, issues around separation and isolation, impact them. And so what, what is our thinking, if any, in this work as a CBE around suspensions and expulsions that actually take kids out of their environment in place of learning?
Chair Dennis to trustee Hirdlicka. I think that there has been an evolution in our organization and in other school divisions over the last number of years in terms of moving away from a suspension or an expulsion which would take students away from their learning environment. If you take a look at the stats from our risk and resiliency team around suspensions, our, we have fewer suspensions last year than we did the year before. I know that principals and assistant principals in schools are looking at alternatives to suspension all of the time. We have partnered with the YMCA, Alternative to Suspensions for High School Students. And so there are many different ways that people are working in our schools so that we don't suspend our school, suspend students and have them not have access and be isolated. Having students come to a safe place in the school and do their work when they need a timeout for a period, which may be a part of a day or might be a full day, is an option in our schools as well. So, you know, I mean, principals consider the policies that we have related to suspension and expulsion very carefully. We have worked through a variety of other practices and possibilities for students before we would get to a suspension or an expulsion.
Trustee Hirdlicka.
So just following up on that, there are other ways that students are taken out of class and I'm just wondering, how do dress code infractions, including ones that, of course, bring attention to students or remove students from class, sometimes sending them home to change? How does that fall in line with our learning around trauma-informed practices?
Chair Dennis to trustee Hirdlicka. In terms of the dress code issue and having students removed from class, I think that we're working to not have dress codes impact students in negative ways. And an inclusive, our trauma-informed approach to that would say that we need to be as sensitive to students as possible, knowing the story around the clothing that they wear.
Trustee Davis.
So I just wanted to go back to the psychologist services that we're providing to schools. As I, that was information that I didn't have before. Can you just speak to how those resources are allocated? Does it change every year? You know, just some information on that would be valuable. Does every school have access to those services or how does that work?
So I will start and then I'll ask Cindy McNiven if she will follow up. Each year, schools have baseline access to psychological services. Depending on the school context, depending on the programs that might be resident at the school, they may have additional access to psychologists. It would be rare for one of our typical elementary or middle schools or high schools to have a full-time psychologist. And so those psychologists are not in schools in terms of located in schools generally. They're located in our area offices, close to the schools that they're working with. And so, you know, they might be working with six or seven different schools, you know, depending on the school's context.
Cindy?
Each school has access to a mental health therapist and also an assessment psychologist. The way the schools or their psychologists are organized in family of schools, which was mentioned earlier. And each school has a contact so they can call whenever needed to address any issues around mental health issues.
Trustee Hirdlicka.
So I think one of the things, the learning from this presentation that I'm going to take away with today is this is an enormous issue that is impacting our kids at exponential speed. And it's impacting our kids at enormous rates at our schools and our staff. And, you know, as we saw the presentation, there's something that stood out for me. And it really, so much of it is about relationship and kids feeling connected to school. And the work that we're doing at the CBE, I'm very proud of the work that we are doing and continue to do. In regards to relationship at our schools, are there key things that we're focused on to prioritize relationship? Many kids are coming to us and the only real positive relationship they have is maybe with a staff member at the school. Others, you know, are coming to us and they're disconnected at home in every avenue that they have. And it doesn't always mean socioeconomically. We, I see kids in the southwest part of the city and number one issue is mental health. That is what people, staff, students are telling me. So this is an issue, it's going across the board for, you know, whether it's race, socioeconomic, this is an issue impacting our kids and it's playing out in the classroom. So I'm wondering, around relationship, what are we focused in on in our system?
Chair Dennis to trustee Hirdlicka. Personalized learning and looking at each student and what they need to be successful has served us very well over the last number of years. And when we take a look at our three-year ed plan going forward, the relationship of students in their school environment to create the most positive learning experience is key. Our principals believe that. Our principals through our education directors are working on that. And certainly, the wellbeing for learning goal has been something that people have applauded. Principals have said, this gives us an opportunity to look at our students beyond the standardized test scores. And so our teachers, the folks who are working as support staff in our schools, sometimes our facility operator makes a connection with a student. Sometimes our admin secretary makes a connection, our education assistants. So all of our staff really are focused on developing those kind of relationships so kids feel that this is their school place and that they will be successful. And that our staff in CBE And that our staff in CBE don't give up on kids.
All right, I'll ask a question now. I think everybody else is tired out. So, and forgive me if I don't have the quote precise, but during the presentation, it was mentioned that one in five students have mental health challenges. And so I was just curious if, in terms of that ratio, is that just a commonly held understanding or do we have, you know, some confirmation that that is actually reflected in our system? And I guess part of the reason for asking that is that, in response to one of my colleagues' questions, you know, it was mentioned that, you know, we've got a certain number of psychologists that are supporting 1,000 students in some of our unique settings. And so I guess I'm trying to, I guess, identify sort of the, sort of that depth of need that we have in the system and I guess maybe the, how maybe the breadth of support that we can offer maybe don't match. And so, yeah, I guess maybe just that's something, a bigger conversation maybe to have for trustees at some point and, you know, how do we advocate for our kids? But, yeah, am I understanding that correctly? Have I got that right? The one in five reflects us as well?
So Chair Dennis, that would be not a particular statistic that we have created. That would be a more general statistic related to statistics that have been created through our health and mental health professionals. Stephen, do you have any other pieces to add?
So this is a statistic that we report in our mental health literacy training and the go-to educator training that's come out of national research into children and youth in Canada. It's also a statistics that's reported in the Working Together to Support Mental Health in Alberta Schools document that's been provided by Alberta Health Services.
Trustee Hurdleka?
And I would just clarify that it was mental illnesses, one in five, right? Not mental challenges because that, and I guess back to the language pieces, is important?
Okay, trustee Hurdleka, then trustee Davis?
Yeah, I just have one last question and I'm wondering, how do we support and organize trauma-informed practice with cohorts of kids that we know have experienced either intergenerational trauma, such as indigenous students, or, you know, some collective trauma, such as refugees?
Chair Dennis to trustee Hurdleka. There are a variety of specialized supports available and oftentimes, we connect in with, although we are able to provide some supports with our staff that we have, we oftentimes connect in with other community agencies around those pieces. And so the immigrant-serving agencies have been very helpful in terms of programs for kids. And sometimes that would be as simple as a homework after-school kind of connection. Other times, more involvement with their counselors in home support, folks with kids who may be involved in activities that are not positive for them, as you described earlier. I think in terms of our own work, some schools are working with groups of kids based on what parents have identified their students need. And then we'll contact our area team to ask for that additional support. And so our strategists and some of our central-held specialists are working with those groups. Sometimes we're working across two elementary schools. So if there are not enough students in one school to provide that kind of cohort support that is necessary and really does support the social-emotional learning, several schools might go together to do that.
Trustee Davis?
So again, just kind of talking about how parents or students are accessing these services, I understand we've recently changed our process to have a survey that's filled out by the parents prior to, I believe, prior to treatment being started for a child. And I'm interested, when you take a look at those ACE conditions, a lot of them are related to the home. And so is, does that, does that change creating some challenges for, you know, getting that information filled out so that treatment can start?
Chair Dennis to trustee Davis. Our psychologists who are providing the mental health services, they are completing a four-page questionnaire to gather relevant information that informs the treatment process. It's always been a standard practice before beginning an assessment or counseling to interview parents and to gather information, develop a course of action. If our parents, if there are language issues, then we may include appropriate interpreters, translators as well. This new questionnaire, which is a reduction from previous questionnaires, is a standard practice for our school-based mental health folks. Those psychologists certainly can share the information with parents. Principals are involved as well. Psychologists, once though, they have completed that work, they're held by a standard of practice with the Psychological Association and record-keeping related to those records.
And just a follow-up question to that. Do we share the questions with the principals so they can identify, you know, any points they might think might be a challenge for that particular family? Not the answers, but the questions, yeah?
So Chair Dennis to trustee Davis, yes, the psychologists can share the questionnaire with the principals.
I'm going to change topics. Had an interesting conversation last night about a school that has banned cell phones and, you know, there's lots of information about what different schools are doing in regard to that. And I know some of our schools have done that and I'm wondering if we are doing any tracking of impacts beyond our, you know, our current student surveys? If there's any work being done to look at that from a system point of view or the results for those individual schools?
Chair Dennis to trustee Davis. We, in terms of cell phone use, we have a digital citizenship policy and our principals enact that in their various school contexts.
All right, trustees, thank you for all of your questions. We will take a 10-minute break. We will take a 10-minute break. All right, everyone. Next on agenda is item number 8.1, updated audited supplemental information for the 2011-12 per-student funding. Chief Superintendent Ussie, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Dennis, trustees. CBE administration identified an error in the per-student funding number for 2011-12 school year that's used for comparative purposes within certain board-approved reports. The per-student funding amount for 2011-12 was higher than it should have been on a comparative basis. While the 2011-12 adjusted per-student calculation was incorrect, I want to emphasize, and I underscore emphasize, administration's interpretation of the historical trend remains the same. Namely, the CBE continues to face a challenging economic environment, given inflationary cost pressures relative to funding. It is important to note that the supplementary information referenced above is not a required data element for Alberta education governance purposes, and is un-audited. As a result, the information contained in the reports that you have relating to CBE's budget and financial statement reports is not affected by this error. Administration will move expeditiously to update incorrect information and provide explanatory notes. At this time, staff would be happy to answer your questions, if any. Thank you.
Now, trustees, any questions on the report? Right, is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward? Oh, sorry, trustee Hurdman.
Thank you. So, on page 8-3, it says that the stated amount was higher because the amount provided for the Alberta Teachers Retirement Fund for the 2011-12 school year was not removed from the total Alberta education funding. So, was this just the ATRF? Was that the sole source of the error?
Chair Dennis, through to trustee Hurdman, yes, the total missed removal was the ATRF. There was a change in how Alberta education handled and then sent to school jurisdictions the ATRF funding, which I think contributed to it. But that's what it was in its entirety.
Any other questions on the report? Is there a trustee who would like to bring forward a motion? Trustee Davis?
That the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to amend those Calgary Board of Education documents containing the 2011-12 per-student funding amount as and when the existence of the document is known and is able to do so, including, but not limited to, the documents set out in Appendix 3 to this report.
Thank you. Any questions around the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees directs the chief superintendent to amend those Calgary Board of Education documents containing the 2011-2012 per-student funding amount as and when the existence of the document is known and is able to do so, including, but not limited to, the documents set out in Appendix 3 to this report. Trustee Davis, would you like to open debate?
So, I think this is a pretty easy one. An error was found of information from eight years ago. It was brought to the board's attention. And I will say, it was done so, you know, quickly, and certainly, appreciated how it was brought forward to the board and how fast they moved. So, I would, it is just a simple error that was made some time ago, and I appreciate that it's being brought forward in the public forum in recognition of where this appears in our public documents. And I look forward to hearing of everybody's support.
Any other trustees for first round of debate? Second round? All right, I'll jump in. I guess I would also, more or less, echo trustee Davis's comments that, and I guess, voice my appreciation for, I guess, how quickly this was brought to our attention. There was clearly no delay. So, once the error was found, we were informed immediately. And so, I just appreciate that. And, yeah. Also, I guess, appreciate the comments in the report around, you know, that it doesn't change the historical trend that we're experiencing, which is the, essentially, in my opinion, the most critical component. So, yeah, looking forward to supporting this motion. Any other trustees for second round? Trustee Davis, would you like to close? No? All right. And I will call the question, those in favor of the motion. And that is unanimous, thank you. All right, so that brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. There were no items pulled from consent, and as such, all items will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. The board has three legal and two strategic governance matters to deal with in camera following the public portion of this meeting. That brings us to the conclusion of this portion of the agenda. I would like to thank all of you who joined us for this meeting. Our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 22, 2019.